Officially calling the meeting for order and welcome everyone that's here tonight. Thank you for being here. And starting a little call, Council London.
President.
Council Five.
President.
Council Barrett here. Council Wilson.
President.
And myself, President. Thank you so much. And somebody like to attempt on the minutes? We've got to make one adjustment.
Yeah, let me get pulled up. We've had a vote for one vote was not counting. And item number three, Council London, did you abstain or did you vote for that? No, did you move it?
For number three, John, Council of London, actually abstained for number three.
Okay.
An abstention is a no vote. So it's like, he didn't vote, so that's why it's not recorded because he didn't vote on that item.
Is there something else? I'll make a motion that minutes for August 7th, dispense with reading of the minutes for August 7th since each council member has received a copy and that they be accepted as submitted.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Council five, you can.
Yes, sir. I make a motion for the approval of current bills for payment in the amount of eighty-five thousand, nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. That motion carries. Thank you. Do we have any professional or consultant for courts tonight? Thank you. Mayor?
See how we're doing this. Thank you, sir. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you here. I have just a couple of announcements and then I'm going to defer to Chief McDaniel for some introductions and swearing in on some new firefighters that were excited to have a part of the city of Irondale. I'd shared a little snippet last night with the folks that were here for the work session. I want to repeat it for so for the handful of you that were here last night, you'll hear it again. We, I think as many of you know, we just completed a sidewalk project that was several years in the making, talking about planning, replanning, redrawing. You all know that that's been a number of years in the making. I've observed since then, as the sidewalk goes up, Sixteenth Street, Montevallo Road and by the Montevallo Park neighborhood, I noticed a gentleman there in that neighborhood, one of the new residents of Irondale, is handicapped. He's in a wheelchair. And I'd seen him out before in his wheelchair out in that area there. The other day I was driving and I turned on Montevallo and coming up the street was this gentleman, I don't know his name, I'll meet him someday. He was rolling in his wheelchair on the newly constructed sidewalks with his small child on his lap. And I thought, wow, what a great, what a great story, what a great success of someone who, just this time last year, could not have done that, could not have spent that time with his child in that way. That had to be very meaningful on a regular basis to that gentleman and no doubt many others who are using or will use the sidewalks. So, thank you all for persevering, those of you who started way back on that and the new ones that came on and for the patience of the residents. I know it was a long time for that grant to come to fruition and for the sidewalks to be constructed, but it was a job well done by everyone, so I commend any of you who had a part in that and all of us benefit from those types of things. I also, another bit of good news, I received an email this week, totally unsolicited. Opened up my email, saw this from a business owner here in Irondale, it's actually one of our new business owners, it's Bernard Frye, some of you may recognize that name. He is the gentleman who bought the property near my neighborhood that used to be formerly was Fabric Jungle, the property out there on Seventy-Eight. He's been doing some renovations, it's looking really good, he's doing a very nice job. He just gave me an update, he said, here's where I am, here's what we're doing, here's what we have planned, we'll be ready to open soon. And I thought that was nice, but then at the end of his email, he included this excerpt, which I'm going to read to you because I think it speaks well of the city as a whole, it speaks well of the people who work in this building and others who interact with business owners and people like this out in the community. He says, "In your official capacity as mayor, I wanted to thank your team at City Hall who have been most professional, who have been most, the most professional and positive city group I've ever worked with." This is a gentleman who had a business in a couple of other cities, he has a business now, I think, south of Birmingham and had one in Birmingham. He says, "Most professional and positive city group I've ever worked with. It's been a real pleasure liaison with them. I found myself bringing checks by hands simply because the people there were so wonderful. Their helpful can-do attitude is an example to any city that is trying to attract new business. I have been so incredibly impressed and grateful for your team's help and guidance. I was already a fan of your city, but this experience allows me to speak with authority when I tout Irondale's strengths, which I regularly do. Best wishes, Bernard Frye." And City Clerk Stewart, I want you to make sure that as you deal with your staff and folks here, that you communicate that to them as well, but not just the people in this building, everyone, our employees do such an outstanding job on a day-to-day basis. I thought it was important for you all to know and for the staff here to know, I greatly appreciate his kind words. That's what we mean and that's what we're, that's the culture that we're creating here, that we're going to be helpful, we're going to be positive, we're going to be professional, we're going to be courteous and respectful. And, you know, we're not going to always give everybody the answer that they want because we can't do that, but we can be all those other things to folks. Chief McDaniel.
Sounds almost like trying to phone the ring here. [laughter] Yeah, sure, we have you to keep up with everything. Good evening.
Good evening.
What we're going to do tonight is we have three new firefighters here with the fire department. Two of them are going to go through a badge pending, swearing in ceremony. These two have already completed their firefighter requirements, their certification, and then I'm going to introduce the third firefighter, just a little bit more training and she'll be ready to go and we'll do a swearing in and a badge pending for her as well. So, what we'll do is, when I get ready, I'll just call one up at a time, we'll do the badge pending and swearing in and then we'll do the introduction. But just a little bit of history of why the badge for a firefighter is important. Probably the most common badge that you think of when you see a firefighter is that Maltese cross that they wear on their chest. That comes from back during the Crusades with the war over the Holy Land. The Knights of St. John were fighting to protect the Holy Land and they came against a new battle and that was a new weapon and that was fire. So when this happened, they had to band together and they had to rescue their fellow knights and fight against this fire. This specific battle that happened was on the island of Malta and that's where the Maltese cross comes from. When they were done, they were rewarded with this Maltese cross and what this Maltese cross meant, that they would protect, they were the protectors. So, that's, that's the history of where the Maltese cross comes from for the fire department. So that's a, that's a badge that we wear on our chest on all the shirts, whether it's a polo or the tee-shirt that we have. Within that Maltese cross, you're going to see some, usually there's a ladder or an axe or some type of fire equipment, it's all together and that pretty much stands that we're prepared. So within that one badge on the shirt, it's saying that we're here to protect and we're prepared to do it. So, that's why it's so important for this ceremony tonight, for these people to be recognized and for us to swear them in because they are, they are taking an oath that they will protect the community and they will do, they'll be prepared to do this. So the first person that I would like to introduce is Francisco Alba, if she'll come forward if I need asking. Repeat after me, okay? "I, Francisco J. Alba, do hereby declare..."
I, Francisco J. Alba, do hereby declare.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
"...the Constitution of the State of Alabama..."
Constitution of the State of Alabama.
"...the members I serve with..."
The members I serve with.
"...and that as a member of the Irondale Fire Department..."
And as a member of the Fire, Irondale Fire Department.
"...my fundamental duty..."
My fundamental duty.
"...is to serve the people..."
To serve the people.
"...I swear to protect..."
I swear to protect.
"...to safeguard and preserve life..."
To safeguard and preserve life.
"...health and property..."
Health and property.
"...against fire and other perils..."
Against fire and other perils.
"...and to maintain a proficiency..."
And to maintain a proficiency.
"...in the fire service..."
In the fire service.
"...I will uphold the standards of my profession..."
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
"...continually searching for new..."
Continually searching for new.
"...and improved methods of serving people..."
And improved methods of serving people.
"...and I will share my knowledge and skill..."
And I will share my knowledge and skill.
"...with my colleagues and descendants..."
With my colleagues and descendants.
"...I will never, I will never allow my personal feelings..."
I will never allow my personal feelings.
"...nor danger to self..."
Nor danger to self.
"...deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter..."
Deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
"...I will at all times..."
I will at all times.
"...respect the property and rights of all men and women..."
Respect the property and rights of all men and women.
"...the laws of my country..."
The laws of my country.
"...and the members I serve with..."
The members I serve with.
"...I recognize the badge of my office..."
I recognize the badge of my office.
"...as a symbol of public faith and trust..."
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
"...and I accept so long as I am true..."
And I accept so long as I am true.
"...to the ethics of the fire service..."
The ethics of the fire service.
"...I will constantly strive to achieve..."
I will constantly strive to achieve.
"...the objectives and ideals..."
The objectives and ideals.
"...that the fire service instills..."
That the fire service instills.
"...dedicating myself to the saving of life..."
Dedicating myself to the saving of li, of lives.
"...preventing and suppressing fires..."
Preventing and supr, suppress.
Suppressing.
Suppressing fires.
"...and performing other duties enacted..."
And performing other duties enacted.
"...and placed upon me..."
And placed upon me.
"...as a member of the Irondale Fire Department..."
As a member of the Irondale Fire Department.
"...I accept this self-imposed..."
I accept this self-imposed.
"...and self-enforced obligation..."
And self-enforced obligation.
"...as my responsibility..."
As my responsibility.
"...and make these promises..."
And make these promises.
"...so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor..."
So solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
Next person I'd like to call is Aaron J. Armstrong. Repeat after me. "I, Aaron J. Armstrong, do hereby declare..."
I, Aaron J. Armstrong, do hereby declare.
"...that I will support the Constitution of the United States..."
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
"...the Constitution of the State of Alabama..."
The Constitution of the State of Alabama.
"...the members I serve with..."
The members I serve with.
"...and that as a member of the Irondale Fire Department..."
And that as a member of the Irondale Fire Department.
"...my fundamental duty is to serve the people..."
My fundamental duty is to serve the people.
"...I swear to protect..."
I swear to protect.
"...to safeguard and preserve life..."
Safeguard and preserve life.
"...health and property..."
Health and property.
"...against fire and other perils..."
Against fire and other perils.
"...and to maintain a proficiency..."
And to maintain a proficiency.
"...in the fire service..."
In the fire service.
"...I will uphold the standards of my profession..."
I will uphold the standards of my profession.
"...continually searching..."
Continually searching.
"...for new and improved methods..."
For new and improved methods.
"...of serving the people..."
Of serving the people.
"...and will share my knowledge..."
And will share my knowledge.
"...and skill with my colleagues..."
And skill with my colleagues.
"...and descendants..."
And descendants.
"...I will never allow my personal feelings..."
I will never allow my personal feelings.
"...nor danger to self..."
Nor danger to self.
"...deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter..."
Deter me from my responsibilities as a firefighter.
"...I will at all times..."
I will at all times.
"...respect the property..."
Respect the property.
"...and rights of all men and women..."
And rights of all men and women.
"...the laws of my country..."
The laws of my country.
"...and the members I serve with..."
And the members I serve with.
"...I recognize the badge of my office..."
I recognize the badge of my office.
"...as a symbol of public faith and trust..."
As a symbol of public faith and trust.
"...and I accept so long as I am true..."
And I accept so long as I am true.
"...to the ethics of the fire service..."
To the ethics of the fire service.
"...I will constantly strive to achieve..."
I will constantly strive to achieve.
"...the objectives and ideals..."
The objectives and ideals.
"...that the fire service instills..."
That the fire service instills.
"...dedicating myself to the saving of life..."
Dedicating myself to the saving of lives.
"...preventing and suppressing fires..."
Preventing and suppressing fires.
"...and performing other duties enacted and placed upon me..."
Performing other duties enacted and placed upon me.
"...as a member of the Irondale Fire Department..."
As a member of the Irondale Fire Department.
"...I accept this self-imposed..."
I accept this self-imposed.
"...and self-enforced obligation..."
And self-enforced obligation.
"...as my responsibility..."
As my responsibility.
"...and make these promises..."
And make these promises.
"...so solemnly, freely, and upon my honor..."
So solemnly, freely, and upon my honor.
The third person that I would like to introduce is firefighter Kendall Coker. Kendall, she's got about five weeks of class to finish up her firefighter one and two certification and then we'll have a badge pending and swearing in for her. I would like to point out that Kendall comes to us, she was a Pleasant Grove Police Officer. She's made a good decision to come to the fire department, I'll say that. But we're glad to have all three of these people at, at Irondale. Think they're all going to be a great addition and just want to welcome all of you, we'll come back up and get a picture with everyone.
Thank you so much, Chief. Congratulations to everyone tonight. Appreciate you being with us. We're placing some big shoes, people retiring, so welcome to Irondale. Thank you so much. And we'll take a few minutes, if anybody would like to leave that is here just for the ceremony, otherwise you're welcome to stay, but if you'd like to get out of them while you have a chance, now's the time. We'll go ahead and pick back up and if you have any standing committees or special reports tonight. All right, well, all right, why don't we start now with Council London?
First of all, I want to say good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. Sorry, sorry, good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a fantastic week, I'm just glad to be here. We've got a few things, excited that we had two people that are part committee tonight. I'm so excited about that and hopefully with those two additions, we can really get this thing moving forward. Thank you.
Council Five?
A big thank you to the Irondale Chamber of Commerce and TELUS specifically. We had a bingo night at Marty's GM and it was a packed house. It seemed beneficial for the restaurant, it seemed beneficial for the employees, it seemed beneficial for the chamber and I think everybody that participated just had a fantastic time. They, for some reason, chose me to be an emcee. I had an absolute blast and I had good results in that, I guess. So, thank you for asking me to do that, I had a blast and it seemed like it was really fun night for the community. So thank you for organizing that and may we have another.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Barrett?
I don't have anything to report tonight, but I do have a personal request to give. Many of you know our youngest daughter Connie works here at City Hall and she has for the past eleven years. Her husband is in St. Vincent's Hospital fighting a life-threatening infection. He will have surgery tomorrow morning sometime and at best he may lose one or both of his legs, at worst he may lose his life, so if you would keep Connie and her husband Mike and family in prayer please.
Thank you. Thank you. Council Wilson?
Yes, good evening, everyone. Just wanted to announce to, to the public that we had a very good Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association meeting last Tuesday and we will, I would like to thank, and also the Holiday Gardens Neighborhood Association, would like to thank Frank and the inspectors...
Charles.
Charles.
Thank you.
And it was another gentleman there, another inspector.
Randy Pay.
Randy Pay. Thank you. Would like to thank them for coming, answering questions, you know, they really kind of cleared up some, some things that some of the residents in the Holiday Gardens area had, so we want to thank them for spending the time with us and, you know, getting some things organized. And also, I would like to thank Leslie for working with me on the parking ordinance and the noise ordinance. We went over that, I could find too calm and we also talked about addressing some issues that's going on in the neighborhood and hopefully we'll be able to correct that issue pretty soon. I don't know the status of it, but I would like an update, I guess I'll need to get with, with the mayor and Charles and see what's going on with that particular issue. But other than that, thank you so much. That's all I have.
Just, number one, Chief, would you just take a minute and talk about National Night Out while you're here?
Sure.
Please.
Yeah, this will be our, what are we, our third year? We have National Night Out, it's, it's a national, it actually was first invented for August, the first Tuesday of August, but it's way too hot here to do anything outside in August. So for the last, this will be our third year, October the third, we moved it to the first Tuesday of October, so this year, October the third, I don't know if anybody here attended last year, but it'll be at the same location across the street, around the Irondale Cafe, right by the train observation deck. We'll be right there from six to eight on that Tuesday night. We'll have DJ playing music, we'll have some door prizes, the police and fire, we'll have free hot dogs for everybody.
October the second.
October the second, what did I say?
Third.
Third. First Tuesday, I'll do it, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, October the second. And I actually have a couple banners, Buffalo Rock just made them up for me today, so I'll be putting them out, it'll be on our Facebook page, the city page, but we certainly invite you to come out, October the second, to our National Night Out. And I didn't want to eliminate one thing since the fire department took, I don't want you to steal it completely, you know. I need to find me a fireman to hire as a policeman, but... The sergeant standing outside is here running the metal detector, he just informed me, I didn't know this till before council started. He's on our police pistol team and he just got a phone call, he was invited, you don't just show up, you have to be invited, to shoot in the national pistol competition to represent Irondale.
[applause]
Chief, get him in here, chief, get him in here.
He didn't, he didn't even want me to announce it, but...
I just got a new, new member of the family recently too, so we can help.
Bergen, you're on, you're just getting a good shot.
This is Sergeant Johnson, thank you. You got invited, what's Saturday, when did they call you?
They called me today.
Well, they called you today. So he just informed me, so it's in Talladega, it's a big, the new range, they have CMD range.
Yeah.
So he'll be representing our police department, he went in Arkansas, is it where?
Arkansas.
He just went to Arkansas and it's done by points, so he had, I guess, enough points to get called to go represent the police department.
So, congratulations on that. Why don't you tell the folks how that's funded too, I think that's interesting.
Yeah, we didn't have, I mean, in three years, we didn't have one when I started, no ones, we got, obviously several that like to shoot, but some of them are better than others. And obviously, he's very good. So I said, hey, you know, you could select maybe a couple other people, I'd like to come up with a little bit of money, just to kind of get you guys started, which we didn't have a whole lot of money and they have to pay a registration fee and obviously if they go somewhere like Arkansas, it takes more money for hotels and stuff. And so I just happened to be somewhere at a Metropolitan Executive Police Association meeting, I guess, a year and a half ago and I was at the table talking and this one gentleman sitting next to me, I was saying, hey, you know, I'm going to try to find some sponsorships and this guy said, well, hey, I'd love to sponsor you guys. And he came by, like two days later, they called me to dispatch and he handed me a thousand dollar check and said, I'd like to sponsor the pistol team. And so, I said, man, this is great, so they used that money and they did some more competitions, they bought something like a vest to wear. And then he called me not too terribly long ago and said, hey, I'd like to give you another check for a thousand dollars, so they could do some more stuff. So, he did that and then he actually called me two weeks, about two weeks ago and said, hey, I met this man that builds these custom pistols, what's the name of it?
Carolina Arms.
Carolina Arms, builds custom pistols, they still, pistols start at forty-five hundred dollars. And he said, I would like to have a custom pistol made for your pistol team and have Irondale Police Department inscribed on the pistol, so he's actually, is going to give us that. So he's been very, very generous to our pistol team, so. We actually have now like you and two others on the pistol team?
Two.
We had about four or five, but they kind of dropped off some. But so, you know, and he's actually put us on to some guy that makes shooting hardware that's going to also sponsor the team and so it's really, mushroomed out into a, a nice thing, so we certainly appreciate, appreciate him.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Just to finish up real quickly, we probably, on our next two work session Mondays, there may be some discussions starting on budget, we'll try to combine those. But definitely on the meeting on September seventeenth, we will have a presentation at the five-thirty meeting, which will actually be an economic development meeting to start off, to have Retail Strategies, which was a group that tries to attract businesses to various municipalities, will be doing a presentation that they've already done to the personal development authority. And just something for information, more for the council at this point, we had used them in the past, but the CDA seemed very interested in potentially looking at them as an alternative source to help. But that will be just a general presentation of what they can do and how they do it.
Do they know the history behind Retail Strategies?
Uh, yeah, it is, yeah, that's, we discuss that at CDA, so. Five-thirty, economic development, followed by six o'clock work session. 5:30 economic development, followed by a 6 o'clock work session. He said he could probably finish in about 15 minutes. And the CDA did make a change in their meeting date. They will be meeting on the 3rd Monday of each month, so that will be right before the work session for the second council meeting and they will be meeting at 4:00 PM. That was by mutual agreement of the group.
Right.
Here at City Hall. And that's all I have for tonight.
Is it possible for President to move that we, 5 o'clock work session on Monday?
8:00.
Is it possible to move the work session to 5 o'clock on Mondays?
Well, they may take up to an hour and a half, so we would probably be butting into their time. They've been running about hours to an hour and a half.
On a regular basis, 5 o'clock work session on Monday, on a regular basis?
I have no problem with that, John. Like I say, it would butt into potentially the CDA on that 3rd Monday. But I have no problem with it.
Why can't we meet at 5 o'clock on Monday? Because I would love to hear what Retail Strategies have to say.
You're talking about moving our work session?
Work session to 5 o'clock.
I can't make it 5 o'clock on any day now.
Usually, they're keeping to 5:15, I'm not here until 5:30.
I think...
I'll make it to 5:30.
I think we're off of the agenda somewhat. Can we come back to it? Because I have a few things that we need to, I think, I have a few things we need to add to that also. So, can we go finish, go ahead?
Yeah, we have work.
Yeah.
And do we have any reports of boards and non-council committees? Ms. Schumaker.
Good evening, Matt, turn around.
Yes, ma'am.
My name is Kelly Schumaker. I'm the Director of the Irondale Chamber of Commerce and we did have a wonderful res of bingo last night. Thank you so much to Marty's for just embracing the community. Thank you so much to the Irondale Senior Center for lending us their bingo equipment. Thank you for the best emcee who must have been a bingo caller in another life. David Spabi, you had fun.
I had a laugh.
We're going to be doing these quarterly and so at Marty's. So, just keep your ears open, we'd love to have you. It's a wonderful opportunity for the business community and the Irondale community to get together and just share some great times. We really did have a good time.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yes, sir.
I scheduled on Monday beside the first one, so the rest of the council might like to come.
It was, definitely, we were trying to, we will never schedule it ever again during a work session. We want you all to be there, it really was so much fun. And thank you to those who came out. I want to make an announcement that our fourth year for our 9/11 remembrance and Thanksgiving ceremony will be held on Tuesday, September the 11th, 9:00 AM in front of City Hall. We were ranked out last year, there is no rank plan, so, because we will be celebrating on 9/11. And just to let you know, this is for us to remember those who lost their lives and families and businesses that were affected on 9/11, but also to give Thanksgiving to our first responders. That is our fire department, that is our police department, that is our CERT, our Citizens Police Academy, everything here in Irondale. So, if you can, it does begin at 9:00. This is like a wedding, you are there at 9:00. And so, we'd love for you to be there.
Kelly, did you get that date and time one more time? It is 9:11.
You're not going to call you?
That's all right.
Okay, all right. I'll have you to be there, 9:00.
Okay.
And you know I'll call you at 8:30, make sure where you are, okay? Because you know how I am. So, all these guys will be here. They might not know yet, but they'll be there. And then, our next chamber meeting will be Thursday, September the 13th. John Cooper, who's the Director of ALDOT or Alabama Department of Transportation, will be our speaker. So, I am looking for, I hope you will think about attending that. Again, that's Thursday, September the 13th, 11:30 to 1:00 at Pine Tree Country Club. And just, this is our Christmas parade, just to let you know, it's going to be the second Saturday in December, December 8th, 11:00 AM, followed by the Christmas tree lighting. And our parade grand marshal is Irondale resident Brittany Wagner. I don't know if any of you ever saw Last Chance You, three seasons on that, but she was one of the inspirations of that program and she is an Irondale resident. So, just put that on your calendar and start thinking about your flight. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Schumaker, appreciate it. All right, who wants to take on the agenda?
I'll make a motion, the agenda will be approved with the following changes. Item number one, under unfinished business being moved. Item number four adds pending approval to the contract.
All right, can I get a, before we go out there, can I, the mayor, the mayor just, no, item number one, you know, it's being moved, because I think you talked to the board.
I gave you all, I gave you all, and that was my update, which he essentially said that he thinks that you all as a council need to determine what you want to do with the park, big picture view, and then decide who has to help draw that out, whether it's an architecture firm, a landscape architecture firm, or whoever he is. And he said then his firm would look at it and if they qualified to propose, and he happened to propose, but he felt like putting it out, request for the qualifications or for proposals, depending on what you all decide. And then that's approached. I concur with him, I think it's why.
Current motion on the floor, do I have a second?
I have a question. Item number one, as far as Thursday, October 4th. Did we discuss any other dates like a moment?
We're not too messed up, sir, we still don't make finished business and have a motion on the floor.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Well, actually, we have, we have the agenda, the discussion after it's been approved.
But you left it on as it is, so we can discuss that when we call for the vote.
That's fine.
Okay.
Second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, motion carries. And then we'll move to item, first public comments. Any public comments tonight on the agenda items only? Remember, the first ones, then we move under unfinished business, so it would be the items listed under new business.
Now, Cindy Quayart, at the 729 Belmont Drive. I'm wondering if the city council may want to consider the comment made by Mr. Stewart about bond money being left over from those Mercedes bonds, taking that money to offset our deficit so that the city doesn't wind up draining our reserves? I'd like y'all to consider the possibility of doing that. And because we are faced with such a huge deficit, reserves are for emergencies. They're not for things that we want, they're for emergencies, unforeseen things that come up. And we just passed an occupational tax to try and offset the losses that the city is going to sustain. And we don't know, it's been projected, that next year it will probably be in the neighborhood of a deficit of 1.9 million. That's not concrete, but that's what was said at various town hall meetings when we discussed the occupational tax. So, with all these things in mind, I'd like y'all to really think about your responsibility as city council members. You're responsible for governing, but being financially responsible. And so, when we don't have money, while these things are nice to have, this Kahaba River landing, it should be something that you put off and look at next year, when the city is in a better financial position. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments from the floor? Thank you.
Jenny Brown, 4154 Riverbrook Road. I'm addressing item three. I would encourage you to go ahead and move forward with your commitment to Freshwater Land Trust that was made several years ago. To the agreement with Freshwater Land Trust was they would buy this land and make it public, asset access, give it public access. It's located within Irondale city limits, but it is public lands and we get to use it as green space. It's not just a voting destination, families use it, we have a lot of dog walkers, people that swim their dogs down there, children and families use it. And it can be a wonderful resource. It's not just a voting destination, it's a valuable ecological resource. We're drawing people, I talked to a couple from California that brought by, that were passing through, they found it, they brought by, swam their dog, hung out. They're finding it through, there's actually an app called Find My Rope Sling. I talked to people who've traveled here from 14, that kind of Bullville, Gardendale, Tastoria, Tuscaloosa. They're coming from all over, it really is a destination. And we're really missing the boat, and no pun intended, if we don't develop this and create it more than just, just voting or whatever, but it's a green space for us. And you have, you've entered into, the city entered into a commitment with Freshwater Land Trust to do these improvements several years ago, and the timing is right. And we're your pastime on this, we're the link one on this. And they've made substantial improvements down there with bank, with stabilizing the river banks and erosion control. And they're sort of waiting to see, you know, the residents fulfill their commitments so they can continue on doing what they've committed to do. But it's, it really is a destination and you'll really be, we're missing an opportunity here by not making the improvements we can and moving forward with that. So, I encourage you to focus on this.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? All right, if not, we'll move right into item number one. Item number four first, and then we'll have a session. Thank you.
Make a motion that Resolution Number 2018 R45 be approved.
Got a question on that. As far as the date, have we considered moving it to either Monday or Wednesday?
I know the default has usually been Thursday, when Tuesday wasn't available, that's just kind of been a rule of thumb as of late, but I have no problem with Wednesday personally.
Are we having a work session on Monday?
Yes.
We not use that for a, for a council meeting?
Obviously, why?
Also?
I don't have time, I'm going to be here anyway.
I guess that's a question to...
I don't have a problem with Monday.
Yeah.
We haven't seconded it yet, so...
No, no.
Well, I'm removing it for a second.
That's all right.
Well, I said Monday or Wednesday. Since there's a motion on the floor, do we not have seconded and voted down, or can we remove it or second?
There hasn't been a second yet.
It was not seconded, so we should be fine.
Right now, you're just talking.
Removing my motion.
You're throwing the motion.
Okay, so I should be fine, all right? And what you're proposing is second one?
Make a motion that we change it from October the 4th to October the 1st, maybe October 1st.
I propose it as a question to the council. I'm not saying we need to have it on the birthday or have it that Wednesday. It was a question, that's all. I know we have some problems with Mondays because all of the council persons, they're not here. They can't make it on Mondays and I know Wednesdays for most is a church night for most. But Thursday, I know I won't be here, I already announced that, so, you know. I'm just putting it out there, we can go for Thursday, I don't mind, you know. That was just a question.
Wednesday, from Wednesday, you're a good day, I can be here on Wednesday. I'm fine with Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Move the October the 3rd?
3rd.
Yeah. Wednesday, October 3rd.
All right.
Okay, someone better put that motion on the floor.
Make a motion that Resolution 2018 R24 changes council meeting date from Tuesday, October the 2nd to Wednesday, October the 3rd.
And that's, and substitute for the meeting on October the 2nd, okay. Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Any opposed? Thank you. All right, number two?
Motion that Resolution 20R1820, 18R46 be approved.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I have a question before I proceed on three.
Yes, sir.
I just want to go ahead and get on the floor. James, when you were talking about the cap fund, I was kind of spacing out and trying to look at figures and trying to figure out where, how we could pull this off. Now, I believe you said it moved from one criteria to a different criteria if the amount was 15,000, correct?
If it's 15,000 dollars of the cost of the project and a useful life of six years.
Okay.
It would be considered to be a capital improvement.
Okay. And we know that Frank originally, when he was talking about this, gave some numbers about simply using gravel. And that was, and then we said, okay, well, hey, can you throw the rail in, hey, can you throw the fence in? Do we know if he is, I mean, I know we said not to exceed 10,000. Knowing that he's added some things to it before we were originally talking about it, would it be reasonable to say that this item could be approved in the amount not to exceed 15,000 and then it follow to that second criteria?
I mean, it could, but I had a conversation with Frank when they were going back and forth with mending the resolution.
Okay.
And what he shared with me is that most of the cost is going to be in the in-kind services.
Okay.
Because they're going to make the, he told me that they're going to go ahead and make the rail themselves. They would use the gravel, they would need that for materials, but really, the bulk of it would be the, I guess, would be the mat now.
What about the items for the fencing and the stone and that stuff?
We didn't get a little bit in depth with the conversation.
What I can say, right, what Frank was charged was to make what the items were.
Right, just to make sure.
And come back with a cost of what those cost. So, I don't think you're saying, well, let's make it 15 qualifies, you know. And I don't think you want to inflate the cost, I mean, it would make sense to.
You've talked with the mobster about more than I have. I just know when I first reached, they were like, okay, 10,000 is a good number, so I didn't know how much he had backed into that.
I guarantee you, he has his numbers down, reason why, and he thinks that he can do it for less than 10,000 dollars, or he would have given you a higher number.
You're correct, you're correct, man. He feels that he would be able to do it under the 10, but the 10 was more of a, if he needed to. But if you know anything about Frank, he's not going to spend one dollar more than, than he has to spend.
So, let me ask you a question, attorney. Is there a line item on here that we can't take it out, like the reserve lodging tax, what about lodging tax?
I haven't looked at the lodging tax to see what restrictions there are for that. I would have an opportunity to look at.
I think we're used to it.
I would say that we would not be able to take it from, you know, the lodging tax. I mean, the best place to be able to take it from is from the list of accounts that I sent you all last, last week. You just want to use something in general, I mean, you can, I mean, you can take it from the reserve fund. I know that there's no restrictions on being able to move money from reserves. It may not be the most prudent decision, but there's no restrictions on that. Also, there's some money that's, as I stated, that was left over from the 2014, you know, bond proceeds. There's some money in there that's left over from that. I would say it doesn't fit for the capital improvements, as I pulled that information and kind of reviewed it. But you're pretty much kind of restricted to those items unless you can look at the budget for parks and most of those items should be at 80%. You identify some items in the park budget that are not at 80%, you may be able to shift some money from there.
Well, I mean, the easy one is you have 40, 45,000 or so and that you all self-impose your designation for Rutner. I mean, if it's important and a priority, you've got 42,000 dollars.
I made a commitment that that would stay with the ballpark and I want to honor that commitment. Now, obviously, I'm one of five, so, I mean...
And I don't agree with spending money that's not necessary, you know... And I, I, I don't agree with spending money that's not necessary, you know, at this, at this time. We can come look at it again next year, uh, in the spring maybe after we see what the, uh, tax revenue is going to be like with cities in a better financial setting. I don't think we need to be spending money that's not necessary.
So, we're talking potential six grand, five grand? That's what, that's what we're talking about?
Talking the volume to exceed ten thousand.
Yeah, what we're talking about, five, six grand, maybe, maybe CDA will give five grand.
We qualify, we qualify. That's the economic development.
It's going to give us a big amount of development.
Economic development.
It's going to help us make an development.
We're waiting to hear from the attorney general opinion on matters like that.
It's just a opinion.
It is, but that's, that's fine, I mean, it's legal. And we're waiting to hear from that, so we really can't commit to anything at this point until we hear from the attorney general.
I would, I would say, knowing, and I'm looking at the, the bond proceeds, given the fact that the bronze, bond proceeds are in the general fund, I'm going to identify that as the funding source.
And it has been identified that since this is a non-budget item, I think that was pointed out last night, we'll have to treat it as an ordinance as far as...
That's fine. Just comment here, man.
Is anybody willing to, uh, take that through the steps?
Give me a moment.
While, while you're looking for that, let me just make a comment. You know, we, uh, you know, as a city, I understand the financial position that we're in because I don't, I don't like to call it a financial deficit because I can think of plenty of other things that, uh, plenty of other examples, uh, to use when we call a city in financial deficit or whatever you want, want to say about it. But sometimes I think as a council, where we do make the financial and property decisions of the city, that we can be stagnant and not move forward. And some of the things we're talking about, which is pennies, um, a thousand, six thousand, ten thousand, whatever the case may be, yes it has to, but you can also hamper the city from moving forward and holding these kind of projects up that's going to benefit the citizens of Irondale. So we need to be very careful as far as always talking about a, a deficit or whatever the case may be. We've already taken the tax that we've had, I won't say earmarked, but what we identified, I'm talking about the lodging tax, that we identified years ago and start using that for something else, which we told the citizens, this is what we're going to use it for. We've already done that. So we need to be very careful as far as holding up the city when we start voting on these kind of items that's going to benefit the citizens and the public. Now, I've been here a long time, and sometimes we can hamper ourselves by putting out information, oh, we so this and we're so that, because that's not the case. Go ahead, council.
Can we go ahead and move forward with the motion that somebody is willing to put on the floor?
Sure, absolutely. The seven and three, resolution twenty eighteen R forty-seven as O, twenty eighteen O forty-seven, I believe? Is that what we're going to call it or do I just leave it alone and just take it to the steps?
Just take it to the steps.
Okay, perfect. I make, I make a motion that resolution number twenty eighteen dash R dash forty-seven be considered read.
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Who opposed?
Nobody. I just said, thank you.
I make, um, I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of resolution twenty eighteen dash R dash forty-seven be suspended and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, Councilor London?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Beard?
No. Continue the vote, please.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
And myself, no.
I'll make up next council.
So we'll come back on your, hold business at the next meeting. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to our next one. And the question is, what are we actually approving because this document, we had some questions about, so...
Well, my attorney said she had the contract, so we're just pending, uh, the contract that she has.
Yeah, that's what, that's what the, uh, the approval of the gentleman said, including pending approval of the contract. So you could add that to the resolution we've got there.
So I make a motion that resolution twenty eighteen dash R dash forty-eight accepts a request submitted by the Irondale Exchange Club Foundation, uh, for the celebration, Irondale Two-Two, number twenty-seven, um, with the approval of the contract to be passed.
And this does not involve any money or in-kind services, so we're not able to treat it, so what we need is a second?
Second.
Okay? And all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. All right. Move on to the next one, please. This is a good one and non-budgeted, so we'll have to go through the process.
I have a question on, on this particular one. I know we addressed that earlier, did we ever come to some kind of conclusion on this? I'm kind of, it's kind of in the...
I thought we said this one definitely could come of cap fund.
Because of the amount and the expect, life expectancy of the item over a year.
But due to, I'm sorry, go ahead, please.
I mean, as far as that fund goes, if it is funded with money from the capital improvement funds that come from the state, you can only use those funds to the extent that the items that you're buying are installed in a building or a structure. I've got, I talked with the local municipalities today, to the extent these radios and equipment are going into vehicles, I don't think that...
First of all, the money is not coming from the Alabama Improvement Fund.
Okay, that's my, my, my gap.
The money is coming from a bond that was issued by the city in twenty eleven. It was a twenty eleven B-bond issued that was for capital improvement.
Okay.
That's where the money is coming from.
And that is, that, to me, sounds fine.
Again, we're not, set this motion on the floor with, uh, knowing what we do now.
I make a motion, um, that resolution twenty eighteen dash R dash forty-nine to purchase a new radio system for E nine eleven, the fire department and the police department for, uh, three hundred and twenty-one thousand, four seventy-two and fifty cents be approved?
Well, we have to do it, set a brand, consider...
I'm about to, I'm sorry, obviously, I thought because we had a fund for it that it was...
It's non-budgeted, we do have funds. It's non-budgeted, thank you.
I make a motion that resolution twenty eighteen R forty-nine be considered read.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
I make a motion that would prevent, that, that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of resolution twenty eighteen R forty-nine be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Okay, roll call. Councilor London?
Yes.
Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Beard?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
I make a motion that ord, that resolution twenty eighteen R forty-nine be finally passed instantly.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Okay? Anybody like to go on to the last one?
I make a motion, the resolution twenty eighteen dash R dash fifty appoint Samantha Goodman and Ann...
Baffiatus.
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 Baffiatus. Baffiatus to serve on the Parks Committee until August twentieth, twenty twenty.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries. And one item, uh, we did get a email about someone wanting to use, uh, Field Six coming up, but we did not add that to the agenda, but they're wanting to use it this coming weekend, but we're not sure where we stand as far as exclusivity because the existing contract is not canceled till September seventeenth.
Come here, come here. I talked with Leslie today, we had a long conversation today, and, uh, Mrs. DeRue is ringing a phone call from, from the mayor to let him know that the contract has been canceled.
Hasn't received the letter.
He said, hasn't received the letter. I've had to talk to him today, but as, after talking with, uh, attorney Leslie, if he would agree to stop the contract immediately, then we can move forward with the...
I don't think we can cancel it immediately.
And I'm just kidding, Mr. Lamb, Mr. Lamb, Mr. Lamb, I was going to turn and I talked to him.
What we're talking about is that if John chose to waive that thirty-day provision, then that would be up to him.
You should have talked to him today.
Yes, he said, he said, well, he wants you to come.
Yeah, you're going to ask me.
I did, where he wants you to come.
And me and Leslie were talking a little before the meeting and we were trying to figure out, okay, well, what, because we talked about exclusivity with these new guys, and we were talking about, okay, well, where's the exclusivity language in, in DeRue's contract? And we were struggling to kind of find it.
It's, it's not as clear.
Right.
It, it's just not a clear language.
Right. And then what I keep coming back with is, um, Sam, uh, Slam agrees to a handful of things, but it says, uh, Slam agrees to create and manage field usage and maintenance calendar slash budget. So that, to me, says that DeRue is, we basically gave him exclusivity to create, um, the calendar and, um, and manage it. So, I mean, if we were to do that with these guys, we could possibly be in breach.
That's right.
Correct, but a bigger concern, as I shared with the Park Committee last week, is that if you give exclusive rights to city property, it really becomes franchise and it means something that you need to go through a better process. It's not to say you cannot do it.
Right.
But go through the proposal process.
Oh, yeah, it's, it's bad on Hill Street, but, yeah. So I don't think we can...
So that would mean nothing to really consider tonight, other than potentially, uh, if there is a call to the gentleman, uh, the contact needs to be made with him in order to use that field? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, and so this contract is, and so this contract is terminated however that it's done. Uh, right now, it's done the way the document says, he was notified in writing upon that, um, of your all's decision to terminate it. Until that terminates, our practice in the past with him has been fee, fee deals with the employees and sales. We, we have not been doing that since he had it.
Will you be making that contact, Mayor, or...
I can go on the phone.
Would you please? And that clarifies so he can get in touch with Mr. DeRue, ask for the use of Field Six.
But if he agrees to waive that thirty-day notice, then the contract to you all, then we can agree.
Well, again, he's wanting, didn't understand, he's wanting to use it...
It's not going to happen tomorrow. He wants it tomorrow, but that's not...
It's not going to happen tomorrow. You've got the next council.
But yes, so that is exactly right. So whenever it terminates and whoever's the next person to use it, you all need to set the parameters for that, you know? Because it's city property and you need to decide, do you want to rent it or do you want to just let it come use it? Do you want to give it away? What, you know, what are you, what are you going to do?
Councilor London, what's, what's the regulation from the Park Committee though?
I thought, I thought Park Committee, I mean, I haven't heard it from the...
This, this is a request, can you assess the Park Committee?
This is came after...
I'm talking about afterwards, I mean, have, will it come to the Park Committee?
Well, the, the request of Park Committee, this is him, is, uh, to come in, to come to find out the last time, what, open it up or, or give everybody else an opportunity to, you know, present to the council.
But, so, to answer your question about the, this particular request, that they want to use it tomorrow night, came after the Park Committee, so they didn't even know that that request was there, so they didn't consider it. This is something that this will, has come back since then and said, oh, by the way, while we're working on our proposal, we'd like to use the field on Wednesday night, Thursday night, and then each subsequent, subsequent Thursday night, going forward, didn't say for how long, so...
Right, actually, I was addressing it subsequent days as far as...
Yeah, we can't, we can't do anything to the thirty-day...
Yeah, until after this contract is, is over, I do understand.
But no action to be taken to that?
No.
And Mr. Wilson, did you say you had some condition with the end you wanted to discuss? Did that get resolved when you changed that?
Uh, no, that got resolved. Also, let, let me address the, uh, the work session. Uh, I know we've always talked about, you know, some of the councils not able to attend, um, and normally we have worked with councils in the past as far as changing work session dates or whatever the case may be. Councilor London, I know it's been an issue as far as Mondays, do you see any other days or is Mondays okay or what?
Monday's not a good day, I just held it up on the, two years ago, it's not a good day. That's my last day, I'm sorry.
The problem has to do with your comment consistently about getting material ahead of time. If we do it on a date before the meeting, we don't have much of an option except maybe Friday, if, and we may get it on Friday. So again, uh, that, uh, does not fit into your requirement to get your information ahead of time. So no matter what you do, Monday still suits the majority of the council to get the information and be able to have discussion.
There's a move that might not just be...
Now, five, I don't have a problem with time, uh, if that would make a difference.
I can't be here by five.
See, we got two, you can't be, that point, you got two, you can't be.
Which is odd, if you're fine on final, but if we have an early...
But again, if you'd like to put it out to a vote, you can put it on the floor and we could do a poll. Not trying to exclude anybody, but there's just not a better day.
Well, we already got the majority, so, that's fine. Uh, another question, Mayor, you know, like I've said before, you know, communication is the key. And tonight, you know, we could discuss it later, but I do want to address it. Some of us had no idea that we had three new firemen that was coming aboard for the City of Irondale. Uh, it would have been very helpful and beneficial with that information or some kind of communication that went out. Uh, I don't know if I can speak with all, for all the council, but particularly myself, uh, that we were getting new, new firefighters. That even goes for the hiring of our chief, you know? You have that appointment, but I've never been involved with administration that I did not know what was going on. So in, so in the future, again, it would be nice if you at least give me a heads up. Like I said, I can't talk about, I can't talk for all the councils. I'm talking specifically for me.
That's why we did a formal ceremony tonight, so everybody would know.
I'm talking about before. We're, 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 we're stewards. I'm, I'm, I'm a steward of the city. So it would have been nice as far as to know that we did hire three additional firefighters.
And, uh, let's not call them additional, they were replacements, so...
I don't, I don't understand why the city council needs to be involved in hiring employees.
No, it's not very...
It's not our role.
Did I, did I say involved or no? Which one?
Well, I think, I think so. Should we open up for any general questions from the public? So they, complex, anything. And if you don't mind, you can one of the likes, if you, what I should work.
Uh, Regina Bearlin, um, forty fifty-six Sherwood Road, Irondale. Um, I was just, we were discussing at the work session, um, about the Rutner Park, and it's been taken off the, the, um, agenda, but I would just like to ask Councilman London, um, if there would be a problem with the, uh, Parks Committee getting together and just going and looking at some of the, the baseball parks in the, in the county and just getting some ideas in your own heart and your own mind about what you like and what you don't like. And I, and I know you probably know, but this would just make the citizens feel like you're doing a little more than just expecting someone from the outside to bring information to you. And you could go and see how it's laid out, um, you know, and talk to the people about what they like and what they don't like about it, and just give you some information. So that's what I'm challenging you to do.
Good day. Thank you, ma'am. Uh, I don't know, she challenged me, so, uh, to, with due respect, uh, that's, that work has already been done. I have, for the last six years now, I have been out, I have visited different parks, and